Thank you. Now, thank you. Apologies. I'll call the meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools Committee to order for Tuesday, June 26th. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, a reminder that the school committee meeting will be in person for tonight, and a remote option is available using the web link posted on the agenda on the Falmouth Public Schools website, and also on the town's Agenda Center, and also its mainstream on Channel 8. Chris, would you mind doing the land acknowledgement for us, please?
Of course. Falmouth Public Schools acknowledges that we are gathering on the unprecedented ancestral, unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Sutaneset, Oqoit, Sipowisset, Tatakaet, and Chappaqoit, as original stewards of what is now known as the Town of Falmouth, and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of Indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people. In alignment with the core values of the Falmouth Public Schools, we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoag Nation.
Thank you so much. In accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, I would remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded, and if anyone would like to make an audio or video recording while you're recording. Noah, are you recording today? Oh, is it not?
Oh, sorry, me?
No. I was like, maybe I can't see her. I have my glasses on. Okay, thank you. Terry, mission and mission?
Okay, the Falmouth Public Schools' mission. Our Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are-
Sorry, can we stop for just a second?
It's me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's still going. Sorry.
The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. The vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you so much. So, I just wanted to start our meeting with two announcements. One is that our hearts are, of course, with Mashpee tonight as they grieve the loss of a member of their school community and injuries to four others in an overnight accident. Two of our students were also involved in that accident that many of us have already heard about. And from a statement earlier today that went to the high school, these types of events impact all of us in unexpected ways. Counselors will be available to meet with anyone who needs it on Friday, June 28th, between noon and 2:00 at the Falmouth High School library. And students can also reach out to Ms. South from the high school at c south@falmouth.k12.ma.us. So, from tragedy to almost tragedy, we also want to take a moment to recognize a few members of our school community who assisted in the saving of the life of a four-year-old child at Goose Pond a week or so ago. And we are so grateful for their awareness and the assistance that they provided that prevented a true tragedy. We had five students that assisted and were there that day: Lola Tevo, Lily Joyce, Emma Resicott, Halon Perry, Tatiana Rosa, and her mom, Melinda Andersus. And Melinda is also one of our bus drivers. So, just to take a second to honor that and say thank you, they are going to tune in tonight. Thank you for your act of heroism. Moving on to public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, the committee cannot comment on public comment items. For items that are on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion. Comments can also always be sent to the committee at schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any attendees that have public comments? Okay, moving along to our presentation on the Falmouth High School Project Adventure. Come on up. Hey, Lila, can you just tell your name?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name is Caitlin Dugree, most coaches from the coach. I teach PE, Health, and Adventure at Falmouth High School and have for seven years now. I want to thank you all for giving me a chance to pitch our program, if you will, and let you know what our PE department is doing and what we're hoping to do in the future, particularly with our adventure program. So, I'm appreciative of your time tonight.
Project Adventure.
Well, not that one. Well, I'll get to the front there. Project Adventure has existed at Falmouth High School for over 30 years. It started in the '70s as, so we project adventure our class. And then there's also Project Adventure. They are a private nonprofit that does adventure and experiential education workshops. They facilitate, they do trainings, they do certifications, they also build and inspect courses. So, they're considered an industry vendor across the board. And they were the original creators of what we know as Project Adventure. At the high school, when I came to Falmouth, I was tasked with taking Project Adventure from a unit or an activity within our PE curriculum and turning it into a semester-long course. To give you an idea of the scope of that, our semesters are about 20 weeks long. We have class four to five times a week, so I'm seeing students about 80 times a semester. So, I was able to build out that curriculum and get Project Adventure as one of our course offerings within our PE and Health Department there at Falmouth High School. What we do at the high school is all of our freshman team- All of our freshmen take 9th grade Health and PE. Socceroos take 10th grade Health and PE. And then their junior and senior year, they need to take two more PE courses. They could always take more than that, but they have to take at least two. And we have seven different offerings that we have for them: independent study, exploratory PE, lifetime activities, team games, personal fitness, wellness leaders, and then Project Adventure. Of those seven, Project Adventure, lifetime activities, team games, are the main ones where we tend to offer at least four or five sections or classes of those every year. So, they are, the meeting belongs to the most popular of our options that we offer. So, do you want to go to the next slide? Fabulous. So, what is this thing in Project Adventure? Project Adventure is based in experiential education. So, that's the experiential learning cycle. I utilize the experiential learning cycle on what I'd call like a macro scale with every activity that we do every day throughout a semester. And then I also feel like I've sort of accidentally thematically organized my entire semester to follow that cycle on a larger scale as well. The experiential learning cycle is having an experience of doing a thing and then coming together and debriefing, reflecting on that. What did we learn? What happened here? And then taking that thinking and, you know, hypothesizing and thinking about, what does this mean for us? Can I conceptualize this? Can I apply this to my life in a different way somewhere else? And then we take all that learning and we apply it to the next thing, or we do something else and adjust the skills that we've learned. This course is my absolute pride and joy. It's why I even applied to work in Falmouth Public Schools. I have said this to Alan Harris before, that the only reason I show backup for school in August is because of this class and because of what my students do and who they become and the things we do by the end of the semester. And one of those being our culminating experience, which is our fire circle ceremony. I won't tell you all the details because I don't think it's allowed, but I do it anyways. With that fire circle ceremony, that's where they do sort of, each class gets an opportunity to reflect on our entire semester together and then think about what that means for them moving forward. And they do that by they randomly get a name from their class. And they get a chance to speak about that classmate. They don't know it ahead of time, they get some time to think about it and what students have shared in that experience. And also the learning that I take away, I share about them as a whole cohort every time. And it's just like that brings me back. That makes me believe in public education and particularly the experience of Project Adventure. So, what a semester looks like for them. I take them through what I sort of loosely call units just because it's a little different when we're doing experiential learning. You can go to the next one. Thank you, Lori. So, we start, we start the semester with community building and making connections with our classmates. And typically, most of the activities during that time are what we call ground games. So, those are things that you might know of as initiatives, cooperative games, get-to-know-you activities. And so, like on the left there, I know these photos aren't fantastic, but on the left there, that's a really, one of my favorite activities I do towards the end of our community building called Blocked Perspective, where students learn about perspective, perception. And by default, we end up having conversations around empathy and what it is to make space for others and to see it from their lens and how that can inform the way that we make decisions and work together as a group. After community building, we move into more problem solving and creativity. And that's, if you talk to any of my former students, they will tell you about all the crazy challenges and activities that Coach gives them that they have to figure out together. And that's a place where we take sort of the group forming and norming. We tend to see some storming when we move into that part of things, but that's all part of the process for them. They have created their own group culture and they use the accountability and the expectations that they've set as a whole class to help them get through different challenges and problem-solving opportunities. When I move from that into RISK, that's when I started introducing low elements. The picture on the right, it's not the best photo. All those students are on a very small balance board. And that particular low element activity, they are tasked with multiple levels of needing to change their location and do that in different ways. And a lot of the low elements cannot be done and work when the problem is solved unless they physically engage and emotionally support everyone in class. It's an all-in effort. So, that's why we build up to it after community building. Then we move into RISK and leadership. And RISK is the piece of the class that I enjoy the most. I think it's the most applicable to life for them. And by the end of the semester, I think, based on the conversations and how I'm able to work with students, I think it's really successful. We dive into the zones of proximal development, which is like education speak for basically how we learn. So, we have our comfort zone, and that's the stuff that is easy second nature to us, brushing our teeth. And then we have our stretch zone, which is the only place for learning in ten places. If we're not in that zone, we aren't learning anything. We're either really comfortable or we're in that third zone where in some version of crisis or panic. So, with our students, this year I went to the International Conference for Experiential Education, and I took back a way to facilitate teaching about those zones. And it was a really cool activity with different cards and experiences, and they had a chance to place them where it was for them. Then they got the chance to go move stuff. So, you might not agree with everybody else in class, and it was really interesting to see in all of my classes, different cards. Like there'd be groups of kids following each other. They're like, that's a panic for me. And they're like, no, it's not. And going back and forth. And, you know, one of the things I put on a card that I think illustrates what it's like to be in this class and the opportunities for students, you know, I get put walking alone at night. Put it out there. And in one of my smaller classes this year, I had a student colored and a gender non-conforming student. And that entire class engaged in 10 minutes of the most rich conversation about what that meant for them. And I had other students in class who were like, oh, I never would have thought about that for you. And it's that kind of learning, that adventure learning and experiential education lets happen naturally. They were in a, I didn't, I didn't make that conversation take place. It was a card that was, everybody kept moving it back and forth. And it was like, what's the deal? Like, why are we here with this? And they had already built enough of a relationship with each other that they could have these deeper conversations and take something away that meant something. So, once I get to that place and we have a strong community, they understand risk and how to navigate that with each other, that's when we do what we're going to hear about tonight, and that's the high ropes part of our class. If you can click on, if you'd like, Lori. So, as you can imagine, we take students that have admitted that they would never hang out with so-and-so at the same class before. By the end of the semester, they literally trust that individual with their life. That's a pretty substantial thing. We take some time to learn some technical skills. Our students here do a lot more than other adventure programs. We have got some trainings and certifications. I've had folks like, Coach, do you let students belay? Like, what do you do? And I'm like, yeah. Because like, that was baffling to me that they didn't. And I think that comes from, one, just the scope of our program and the effort that our students put into and their level of being engaged. This picture on the left, they give you some context. Those feet on the bottom, those are mine. I'm up in the air. I had our students belay us up. They built up to that. This is the third type of belay that they learn how to do, which is a primary belay. So, I'm up in the air. And then I have enough faith in my students based on how they performed, and they have enough faith in each other that then I can be 70 feet off the ground and they can safely run through the safety protocols to clip in and get their classmates ready to go, safely belay them from the top. You know, obviously, I give visual checks and, you know, some directions from above. But in reality, if something goes wrong, it's on them, right? And I don't say that to scare you. I say that for you to have confidence and the strength and power of this program and the impact that it has on our students. Yeah, that's pretty cool. So, if you want to click to the next one, this is our course right now. I'm sorry for the pencil drilling. The top right there, it's a little zip line, that top right-hand corner, that's just over half our course. That is what failed inspection this past September. The poles that make that course were from the '80s and '90s. So, to give you a sense of how long that they lasted, you know, I recognize them here pitching for a pretty substantial investment from the district and the town, but it's one that's going to pay out and last for us a really long time. So, when that half of the course failed, they lost what amounted to about a month and a half worth of my curriculum. So, I had to figure out some different things to do this past spring. We did it. It was fine. And, you know, we foresee Project Adventure, who they have the proposal that I think you all have seen. We have a really wonderful working relationship with them. They have known and inspected our course for literally decades. So, I was able to go in with them and kind of talk about the dreams we have down the road. You know, I know my conversations with Alan and my various department heads that we see Project Adventure as having a larger impact on our entire school community, not just being a single course that folks take their junior or senior year. And so, part of the course rebuild that we'd like to see accounts for that. It has some elements in there that would potentially allow us to offer a second adventure-based PE class that is more advanced, has some more technical skill stuff in it. So, that might, one, appeal to a slightly different student, but also allows a matriculation and two different experiences on the same course. It would also, it's of a size that I can have my Project Adventure class curriculum exist as it is and then offer in-house trainings and opportunities for our athletic teams, for our clubs, for our student groups that would like to do that and not have that take away from them if they were taking the course as well. And I think that's a pretty amazing opportunity. We are the only school on Cape Cod doing this and doing it to this scale. It's a, it's a pretty unique opportunity. And if you click to the next one, Lori. That picture there is a panoramic. I'm sorry that it's small and a little bit skewed. But we, for me, I had applied for a Falmouth Education Foundation grant last year about Project Adventure because I believe in this so much and I wanted other people to see its potential. So, Falmouth Education Foundation awarded us a substantial grant to go for two days to Project Adventure in Beverly, which is where this picture comes from. That particular element is known as a QUAD, and that is the general structure for the course rebuild that they proposed to us. And on the QUAD, there's a huge group activity which is taking place here. Alan will talk about standing on the pizza box and pulling up and stuff. And then in between each of the corners, there's one to two elements on it. So, it's a really efficient use of space and allows us to, over time, add more things if we would like to. But it also keeps things kind of centrally located as well. We took 40 students and staff from all different student clubs and student government and advisors, teachers, staff members, statistics counselors, and we went to PA. And when we came back, I then facilitated in-house two separate sessions with our student government. And when we got back from the last day that one of the advisors for the HOPE squad came to me and she said, Kayla, like, how do I get my club here? And I said, you don't. It's too expensive. And she was like, what? But I said, we can do it here. We have the potential to do that. And this course rebuild would not only, you know, sustain a program that has been in Falmouth Public Schools for a really long time and one that I think serves our PE department really well and is a really wonderful experience for our students. It would also allow us to bring in more students than just the ones that take that particular class. I think that's a lot of talking for me.
If I can share to all the questions, please fire away. Are there any questions? As you saw, probably when you looked at the capital plan, there's a line for Project Adventure, which is why this is so timely. So, any questions about Project Adventure or the expansion?
I don't have any questions, but I have some comments.
Sure.
So, my freshman year was the first year of Project Adventure. It was required by all freshmen. And it was not met with, by some students. I mean, that student, it wasn't met with love.
Sure.
I can do one of them.
Yes.
It's not my jam. By the end, so we had to take it our first quarter and our fourth quarter of our freshman year.
Oh, interesting, okay.
And it was required for our freshman year. And then after that, you could take it as many times or never again. And I've taken it again. But I love how people who have gone through the program since then have completely fallen in love with it. My husband, who is more than a few years younger than me, when he was at the high school, he loved it. He took it as many times as he possibly could. I love knowing that our kid, that selfishly, our own personal children, but other children have gone through this, are going to go through this. And I love that you have so much passion for it and that you've really morphed it into something for today. It's not just about belaying with people that you talk to like twice a year kind of thing. It's about the trust. It's about creating partnerships with each other with, you know, I see you in the hallway, I don't recognize you, but now we're in this class and I know that ultimately we're going to have to work something out. I love that you have the students think out of the box and have meaningful conversations, not just, and it's not just about, you know, doing the ropes course and doing all the fun things. But it's really about life lessons. And I also love that you came here for it because I don't know that it would have continued, at least in the capacity that it is today. So, personally, I want to thank you for that. And I think I can thank you for a lot of other alumni as well. Then you've really done a great job with it. And I guess that's it. And I love that, what you're doing. And quite honestly, should you ever think about a side hustle, you could probably do it for adults.
So, are you deciding now?
I am.
Still not. I see a school committee retreat in the conference. I mean, do you want to revisit and watch Melissa's form?
Yeah, I often have students who sign up or you ask and, you know, guidance calls me and they're like, oh, they're afraid of heights. I'm like, that, it doesn't matter. There are so many different roles in the way that I've built out the experiences. I have students who never leave the ground. And they have a meaningful experience. They're in their stretch zone. They are, they find a different role supporting and doing other things. You know, I have a student this year, she tore her ACL in a game and was still able to come to class because we had so many things that have to happen. I was like, here's your chair, and then you do all the harness inspections. And like, and everybody loved it. They're like, she's the best at it. And they would go over and make sure that they were good to the climb. And I think that's a piece of it is I feel like adventure, I teach a lot with metaphor. And I tell them like, this is life. We're just doing it with play. And having to move through that and figure out there are different ways for you to be a part of a community and figuring out how to connect with folks even if you have to function in a different role than you're used to.
Terry.
I have a question. It's not philosophical, it's just technical.
Yeah, go for it.
Belay?
Yes.
Could you just demonstrate exactly what?
Do you mind going to the picture with the green ropes? Two photos side by side. So, the group of three that are on the left-hand side that are super small down below, what they're engaging in, we call primary belay. So, they're wearing a harness, the person that has the green climbing rope, and they're using an ATC device which uses friction and rope bend in order to hold weight and break the rope, if you will. A break meaning stop it, okay? So, that rope comes up and it goes over my head and through SRD, which is a shear reduction device. In other words, we don't want rope to be folded completely in half so it rounds it out nicely. And then that rope goes down to the climber and is clipped into their harness, use a climbing knot and then carried there. So, as that person climbs up, the belayer is going to pull slack out of the rope line, always keeping it taut. And every time they do that, they then end up putting that rope on break. So, I can hold that rope with two fingers and Sally, who's climbing, can jump off the element and she's not going anywhere. Okay? And then, and I would lower her down by releasing some of that friction in the belay system. So, that's one, so that's the, so primary belay is the, a student really is running the whole system. That's the last of the belays that I teach them. We do Australian bob belay, which literally uses weight as a counterbalance. So, it's a minimum of three people on the ground. They're all tied in to the end of the rope. And the other end of the rope goes to the climber and they just walk back. So, it's purely their body weight that's keeping that individual off the ground. That's the first one we do. It's pretty foolproof. And then we do team belay, which takes this primary belay and takes each part of it and makes it an individual person's job. So, you end up with like five or six people. They're all equally responsible for the success of that belay system.
Thanks.
It's great to hear all the details of how deep it is because as a parent of, not just belay, of the whole, not just belay, but the whole thing because as a parent of a teenager, all you hear is like, zip line was awesome! You know, you get all of the rest of it. So, thank you so much. Any last questions? Yeah.
I love that you're incorporating all of these other metaphorical and life lesson things into this. And it's just so meaningful. It seems like a very life-changing experience. I've been to the one in Beverly and it's awesome.
Yeah.
And I love that you want to make it go there. So, I was wondering, what is this money set aside for? Is it for bringing it up to code? Is it for adding things?
So, the course that we have is what they would call a pole course, meaning that it's all built on powerline poles, if you will, not trees. So, you can have courses that utilize trees, okay? So, our pole course, half of it failed. The poles are from the '80s, really old, they made over two inches of rot like underground. So, we don't want to climb on that anymore. We need a new course. We can't Band-Aid those poles. So, the 150,000 would be to re, to build an entirely new course. We're anticipating in my conversations with Project Adventure, the thing that didn't fail was our tower. And then we have one other pre-standing element. And that tower has unusually large electrical poles on it. They're like this. So, that's the only reason it hasn't failed is because there's just so much wood there that is, the outside is not great. But I would say I think they might make it this coming year. If they didn't, I wouldn't be surprised. I'm just going to be frank. So, you know, that's why, you know, Lori's been really wonderful as in kind of keeping her updated with this is, hey, when I got here, I was like, so, we should probably plan for a course rebuild at some point because it's going to happen. So, I think that that timeline is coming quicker than we expected.
Yeah.
And we're going to do this for, right?
Yeah, most likely, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any last questions?
Can I say something else? So, when Coach was hired, Project Adventure was popular, it was good, but she, you took it to a whole new level. And it got much more popular with kids. She expanded just so much of what the course entails. So, very impressive.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. All right. Moving right into the capital plan. And it's right at the top of it. So, first three, for all the next three things, the capital plan handbooks and those revised policies, it's our chance to take our first look at it and ask questions, make comments, and then it'll come back a second time for a vote. Is this different than?
No, it's the same.
Oh, okay, correct. Same as what we already have.
Same what we have.
Yes, that's okay. Yes, that's okay. Just no changes, there are no changes.
It's the same as what we have.
Yep.
Pass it down to Sam.
Thank you. All right, oh, take it away.
So, um, so here's a list of projects, the total value for, uh, for the projects for, uh, you know, hopefully that would be voted on, this one million five forty-three. Um, as you see near the bottom, the page, um, the playground, uh, CNC front playground are being proposed, that's, uh, not part of the vote the next week. That's, we're looking at community preservation, um, for that. So, um, but it's listed at some of the capital projects that we have. So, um, starting at the top, the high school, obviously a hundred and fifty thousand, as Caitlin just explained, for Project Adventure. Um, that's a direct estimate from Project Adventure, we build, uh. Um, the second one down is mobile phone infrastructure. So, um, we had a previous article for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars put in mobile phone infra- infrastructure for the high school. We brought in a design firm to actually tell us how to execute this project. And, uh, the original thought was that there was equipment that you'd go, go out and buy and just place it in the high school. Unfortunately, if you go out and spend eighty thousand dollars on equipment, uh, the mobile phone companies could come back and say, you can't use that, you can't download our signals. And that, you'd lose that money. So, we had to redesign how we were approaching this. Uh, with Evolution RF was our designer on this, it was an extensive experience building this for commercial-based buildings, private buildings, uh, office buildings and so on. So, the biggest component of this is laying fiber optic cables throughout the high school. Uh, so that's why the cost is so high. We did have three build bids, uh, they were all in four fifty range, uh, within a few thousand dollars. So, it gives you a sense that, you know, uh, everybody was in there, take, uh, and, you know, there's no excessive bidding in this that we're, we're getting. Very close bids, we have more than that, there were some that were close to a million dollars, so, uh, you know, obviously that's not under consideration here at the roots. Uh, but this amount, this two fifty would have to be added on to the article uh, that had been, it's a couple of years old now. So, the total would be, uh, you know, close to, well, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, and this is, you know, if you're in the building and you're walking down hallways at any different point, there's virtually no mobile, if, uh, coverage in that building. So, I mean, if Dr. Harris was walking down the hallway and had to get, touch an emergency or a mobile phone to lock the door, you're not gonna be able to do it. Um, and so, it's, it's a critical gradient of safety to add that, uh, infrastructure in there. Uh, but the wiring also, it will be helpful for future technology needs, uh, as well. It's having fiber optic cables throughout the building. So, um, uh, it's an expensive item, but it's a needed item. The next li- uh, uh, project down is design work for exterior. In particular, there are three doors that have drainage issues. Some of you saw this on the tours of the, of the high school. Um, where water sort of pulls up, if you have a heavy downpour, the drainage outside the doors is insufficient to move that water away from the door. And so, you see where the field house is, for example, that entranceway, that, uh, there's a small, very thin strip of drainage uh, that has meant to capture that water that's excessive. It's not nearly at the capacity, so it has to be torn up. It has, it has to be redesigned, number one. Torn up, and then, you know, new drainage put into, uh, systems put in to capture the water. What we've experienced is extensive flooding on heavy downpours. I think it was, not this summer, but, uh, the spring, we had a serious downpour and it flooded all through the field house, down the hallway, uh, et cetera. So, uh, and, uh, we're redoing floors, as we'll come down to later on in this list. So, it's, we really wanna get these drainage issues solved. So, that twenty-six thousand is the design work. Uh, we'll come back with the, what the construction costs at the, at a later point. But that's sort of the first step on this. The next item down is the, uh, the phone system, which is actually the phone system, an intercom system, and the rou- uh, the bell system of the high school. Uh, actually two, you know, concept of the, the actual system, self, the computer system, software that's related to that. And then we have the cost related to the, uh, to the phone system, et cetera. So, uh, and this is, you know, uh, all integrated. So, the phone system and the, uh, intercom and the bell system is all operated within one system. Um, and, you know, today, for example, if you go to change the bell schedule, you do have to do it manually. Uh, so, and it's on an old analog device. Um, and so, the, the new system allows you to say, okay, we have a half day today, you can hit the button and that will change all the schedules. But otherwise, uh, ourselves in there changing manual bell schedules every other day and to frequent changing bell schedules. Uh, obviously, the intercom system is critical for announcements, especially safety announcements. And each of the classrooms, uh, have phone systems and landlines in as well. So, that's roughly a hundred and five thousand. We've had repeated failures of this system. So, we cannot make outgoing phone calls and you cannot make internal, uh, you cannot receive internal phone calls. So, the system, uh, and it cannot be repaired. So, the component parts of this system are not available to, to replace. So, this is a critical piece of, uh, safety and security for, for the high school. Another, uh, you know, ongoing problem has been the skylight in the field house. Um, the only high school that has to have rain dates for basketball games on the door. Uh, and it, you know, the, and this, this goes back to the installation of the skylight when the, when it, uh, when it was first installed. So, the, what we're looking at, the design options here, uh, and that's the twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that is either to replace the skylight, you know? To, uh, another option would be repair it, uh, to see if there's anything to value repairing it. Or, third option is, uh, potentially just building a structure around it. So, the designer, uh, will come back and tell us here what our options are on that skylight.
Holly, I have a quick question on the skylight. When you say build a structure around it, do you mean get rid of it?
Yeah, that would be one option depending on the cost. Not that that's a recommendation, but we'd have to look at those three options. I have no idea if, you know, if this is a million-dollar problem depending on the design or if it's something more reasonable. Uh, we're just gonna have to get to that stage where the designer comes back to us and tells us what our options are.
Okay. Any other questions about the, about the high school lines?
Yeah, I have a question about the skylight. Because on the tour, from what I remember, it really seems like it's impossible to do anything with a skylight the way it is because it's a problem.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I, I guess I'm wondering why the, when it's been twenty-eight thousand dollars to go over the information we already have, that it's impossible. I mean, I know there's a commitment to the skylight, I mean, I'm aware of that. There's loads of people who want that skylight. It's fantastic, it's beautiful, it's wonderful. However, it's not workable. And so, I guess I'm concerned about spending twenty-eight thousand dollars for a design when we know it's not workable.
Mm-hmm. I, I, I'm, I'm not at that point yet to say it's unworkable.
I, I thought that's what I heard on the tour, that it was like a real problem in terms of the people have gone over it a few times and it seems like there's a persistent problem.
Yeah, no, we haven't had a designer in there to actually tell us that. Uh, we've had a number of efforts to repair it, but we haven't had a design, architecture or an engineering firm come in and design it. If we close off that side, skylight, it's not just building a, you know, a, a square structure around it. We're gonna have to support the beams internally and so on. You, you know, uh, these options are really, uh, you know, to, to, we really need to study these options before we decide in the future. It won't be inexpensive to do this work. So, I think, you know, while we've been trying to patch it in the past, we really need the experts to go in and tell us what the, uh, what the solution is here.
Thanks.
Okay.
Um, regarding the skylight, it's been a problem since nineteen seventy-four.
Yeah.
And many attempts have been made to repair it, as you know. Um, we'll have difficult discussions on that line at town meeting. But, it finally probably needs to be done. Um, regarding the phone, the mobile phones and the phone system itself, um, what's the timeline once we get approved at town meeting in November?
Right.
And, um, in regards to getting these repairs done or these systems put in place? Because this is a big safety issue as far as I'm concerned.
That, it, it is, especially the phone system could probably be done through the school year, at some point when the school's on vacation. The mobile infrastructure, they're gonna be, need to be in that school for three to four weeks to lay the wires. So, it, it's hard to do that in, whilst it's in session. So, that would probably be the summer, of next summer. So, if we get the allocation of funds in November, uh, at town meeting, the landline system can most likely be replaced shortly thereafter. The phone system would probably have to wait to the summer.
Okay.
Without disrupting, uh, you, you, I think everyone you have control, people in the building all day morning.
Yeah.
That's laying wire.
And any way we can get something from the town in regards to get, getting this going before November?
On the mobile?
On any, on, I know, just to, I know the timeframe is short now, okay? Even in the summer, but.
I, I, I'm telling you, the, the mobile system has been an issue, not forever. I mean, Mary can speak to that, it certainly was when I came in. And we have been trying to figure out, you know, a way to make that happen. That, I, I mean, I feel like the, the phone system, as long as there is a phone system at least getting back in operation, at least puts us back to where we've, we've, you know, been before. The problem is that the phone system is also failing.
Yeah.
So, um, and that, that can be done, uh, over one of our recesses.
Okay.
Yeah. I think if at least we can get that, get that in, then I think we can look at the other.
The, what happens when it does go down is they have to manually reset it and then it comes, comes back on, but they, you know, have to physically do that several times. Um, uh, I mean, the course is short here at town, so it's not that it goes down and you're out with the phone system for a week.
So, so, the phone system includes the intercom system. And so, is there communication build capabilities between the various classrooms within the building?
Uh, I, I believe it's the, the outgoing and incoming calls to the building that go down, not the PA system, as far as I'm aware. Uh, not the PA system going down.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't think that number, mostly it's in the, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, should we move on to Lawrence?
Okay, and Lawrence, uh, this is in the workshop, the engineering shop. Um, uh, if you were to visit the engineering shop at Lawrence, you notice the equipment there, um, there is a pretty massive unit, uh, ventilation unit that is used to pull up all the sawdust from the air and, and through the tables. This sort of elaborate piping that goes throughout the room that, uh, you know, drops down to the various tables that, uh, the children, uh, saw, uh, sanding wood, et cetera. Uh, and, uh, and it, it's, it's original to the building, so it's a nineteen fifties unit. And if you turn it on, the thing is, is just, it's a jet engine that comes off. It is just incredibly loud. So, uh, we, we need to, and it's not as efficient. Uh, um, so, you know, so one, it's age is a factor. Uh, and if you don't have a ventilation system and this thing goes, you can't operate in that wood shop. That, you know, sawdust is very flammable. Uh, so, you, you need, uh, a, a system in there to work all the time that the students are in there. Um, and also, we need to, the workshop design has changed. So, the ventilation pipes don't always meet where the tables are. And, uh, and so, they have to be refitted and redesigned to the room. Uh, and thirdly, uh, there are two smaller units that are insufficient for cleaning the air separate from taking out the sawdust. So, you know, if you can imagine a pipe coming down onto a big bridge block table where the students are sanding things, that sawdust is being pulled out by the big main jack. But the stuff that's, Eric, uh, Eric saw up lies, that's the verb, uh, is, uh, is supposed to be removed by these other ventilation room, uh, units. And it's not, those units just aren't functioning correctly. They have to be a different unit to do that work and they have to be mounted on the ceiling. And, and so, that, and the complete work, uh, is around a hundred and ten thousand dollars to do that. Uh, the major component of that is the major unit that has to be replaced.
And I'm guessing that all these items that are listed are just down-the-road items, is that right? So, generator upgrade, or, down-the-road, not the truck?
That's right, that's right, they were part of it, the, uh, the tenure claim. Um, if you drop down to Mullen Hall, in this case, uh, the, uh, if you look up on the structure of Mullen Hall, you see two, you know, large chimney structures. But when you go into the attic space, the chimneys, all the re-flashing has to be redone. There's significant leakage that comes in down through the chimney. Uh, and there's copper pans, uh, that catch the water, uh, and it's not always successful. So, they have literally trash cans catching water coming out of these chimneys. So, there, there's immediate work that has to be done on this, these chimneys. But secondly, these chimneys are, in, 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 in three of the four cases, are really decorative. But they're massive structures on the interior of buildings. So, that, if you can think about like a weird, uh, almost a pail's shape of the structure, there's a, a large piece of these chimneys that is supported by iron rods and lolly columns.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, uh, they are just, they were, they're original design, but they, that piece of the chimney serves no purpose. There is nothing going through there if you have a, a massive structure that is, uh, you know, close to a hundred years old. That, that, while we're beyond repairing the copper, uh, the flashing and the copper pans, we're looking at a design to, to tell us, what do we do with this structure? We, we just, if you were a talker, uh, while it's being supported, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's just a ton of weight in that attic. And, um, so we wanna look at alternatives to potentially removing these chimneys and keeping the decorative element on the, on the roof, but just taking down these massive brick, brick structures in the attic. Um, so, uh, so that forty-four thousand includes the flashing and, uh, an engineering solution there. Moving down to North Falmouth, North Falmouth is the last school that needs to do the fire line system. So we replaced the other buildings for, that's $150,000. That's what we have estimated. You'd be aware that we just finished a project in Morse Pond for the Simoleon Mall. And East Falmouth, it's a small project. This was on the list last year, it got moved by the town, moved off the list by the town. So this is creation of an outdoor learning space in the back of the building, you know, as an extension of classrooms. It's essentially putting down a concrete pad and allowing for classroom work to be done outside. And the funding for that is, you'll see the negative $25,000. Last year, we got approval to do the fence. But the article gets approved in November. We had to go ahead and build a fence around the playground before that because of preschool coming into, in September. So that article has funding. We couldn't expense that because it was to the articles because the article was approved afterwards. So that money is available. So we're kind of, and it's swapped out to do the patio.
I probably just have a question on the outdoor learning space. Would this replace, is this in the current outdoor classroom in the courtyard of East Falmouth? Or is this behind the school proper where there is an existing patio?
That is, it's a good question. It's behind the, the building, right outside the existing classroom. But right outside that classroom is really our tar pathway. There is no patio there.
Okay.
And all of that pathway is all beaten up and unlevel and so on. So you couldn't use it for.
Sure. So this is not replacing the patio that's outside of what was formerly the double classroom?
No.
Okay, so this is just like up that hill a bit?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And there is, and, and, you know, there is an additional area that will be part of this outdoor learning space that will be done through other funding. But our responsibility is really the patio.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on any of the building stuff? And then we'll move to systems.
One question, not about any of this, but this says it's for fiscal year 2025, but we're all talking about this November's town meeting? Or 2025 town meeting as it says, I'm just.
Right, so for these, all these articles, these will be approved in November?
This November.
This November, if they're approved by the town.
Should it say November 2024?
Yeah.
Toss them.
Sorry, yeah, it should say November 24.
Thank you.
It's my issue when I switch your fiscal years to, to calendar years. I get all confused. All right.
Hold on, one time, Chris had a question.
I just had a quick question for a tea ticket. I see sprinkler system, but I'm assuming it's not a dyer?
No, not right at the moment. That is on the capital plan, but not for this year. But it is one of the last cases that does not have a sprinkler system, which is, it doesn't have to have one by code. It, it's, it's a pre-existing condition. So, but it's something that we want to consider going forward. So it is on the capital plan for this year. That's a, you know, that's a significant project because you have to repipe it. So, and we do try to, we do try to balance this off on priorities of, you know, safety and, you know, the amount that we think is reasonable for the town, so.
Any last building questions? Then we'll do systems. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, you know, the system-wide categories is, you know, we started this last year, and I think it really worked out successfully. And that is rather than trying to go to the town for a specific project, like one floor in one building, that we create a budget for flooring, creating a budget for doors and so on, and painting. And, you know, last year, we got $60,000 for doors. We had put that every year on the capital plan. To give you an idea, we used more than $60,000 in door replacement. Well, if this is approved for this November, we'll use more than $60,000 in replacing doors around the district. You know, so these doors are original doors. They are, they are really wanders, gaps in these doors, et cetera. So we're, you know, we replaced two major doors at North Falmouth. We also placed another major door at Morse Pond. And that ate up $60,000. So just those doors, a single door is $5,000 to $6,000. A double door is, you know, $4,000. So they're not inexpensive. But we're trying to do this as we go along to the different schools. So we have a list of doors that we're working on for this year if this is approved. In the flooring, likewise, we had a project, we quickly used up this budget. We had, we've done the hallways now. We're working underway as we speak from Mullen Hall. We're replacing the floors that are in the main hallway. There was the art room at, at Morse Pond that the floor was in really terrible shape. So that was ripped up and it's been replaced. We have floors at East Falmouth that two classrooms were replaced. We had a lot of humidity issues in one wing of the building. And that the super glue has kind of seeping through the tiles. So, and one case, we, we, we're trying out a new rug system in one of the classrooms, which is actually made out of old plastic bottles. And the rug systems are used at hospitals and used in other public schools. Now they've become a very popular choice. So we're giving a test in one of the classrooms. The other classroom is just replacing the tiles as normal and while also trying to prevent the humidity from seeping through in that classroom. So that's at East Falmouth. We're also replacing rugs in the main offices at Mullen Hall and at East Falmouth. And we're doing some of the floors here, remaining floors here at the admin building. So that, that, that's, oh, I should say, the biggest component of this flooring budget was, and as you have seen, at the fieldhouse entrance to the, to the high school, the floor was badly walked, the terraced flooring was badly walked. It became a safety issue, et cetera. So that's been, or is in process of being replaced. Under that, the office lobby of the high school by the auditorium is in the process of being replaced as well. Under this year's allocation, the main entrance lobby of that terraced floor for the high school will be replaced, as well as we'll continue work and teeticket in other schools throughout the district to use up this budget. So the point of this is, given an allocation like this for flooring, it's given us a lot of flexibility to pick projects throughout the district that we will need to repair without having to go to the town and ask for multiple projects or go into the town and saying, okay, we're going to tackle one school at a time, which you would have to essentially close down that school to do. So, you know, we need to do these, you know, in small parts across the district and during the year. All right. Painting is again exterior painting. This is stuff that will be done during the summer. This is stuff that our custodians are, you know, you forget that the summer months are the busiest months for custodians. They're stripping all the floors, doing all the internal repairs. The external repairs, they really can't get to. So, you know, the schools are in need of painting. So this is for various painting projects across. And then move down to van purchases. This is for two vans. They have, each has about $227,000. So they need time to buy those vans. So that's $180,000. So that's the $1.5 million in total.
Yeah. Yeah, that's your progress. Yeah, if I don't get it correct, you said that we had $50,000 for doors, but you spent $60,000 last year?
Yeah.
So where did $10,000 come from, I guess?
From the budget. We, we had, last year, we had $60,000. We spent more than that indoors. And we just took it out of our maintenance budget. So.
Okay, the turf field that's on there, when that was initially laid, there was a, so many years down the road, it was expected maintenance. That's what that is?
Right. That's, if you look at the 10-year plan,
Yeah.
it's, it's in the 10-year plan, but it's a replacement of it. Initially, there was a, you know, you'd start to accrue that replacement value. That was the original. And then the town came back and said, no, come to us when you.
When it's, yeah, thanks.
So it's, it's in the far future. It's not anything new. It's in pretty good shape.
I did earlier, so now I have two questions, if that's okay. When you talk about doors for, are they exterior doors or interior?
Yeah.
And then my second question, when you said the playgrounds for CPC vans that were hopeful for, which, where are you thinking?
This is the Mullen Hall playground out in front, the Mullen Hall.
Are there pieces that need to be replaced or updated? Okay, thank you.
So this is the project management, design materials, $106,000. The actual construction cost would be slightly higher. So this number is still in process, but it's being what we hope to be done by CPC.
Great.
Wow, that was awesome.
Perfect, thanks. Thanks so much, Paul. So this will come back to, oh, you have one more second?
Well, I think Susan's in there.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Paul. I'm liking this format, this planning, the allocations. I myself, as with many town meeting members, since I've been here, I've been here to renovations to all of these. But time flies when, I guess, when you're having a good time. And I'm trying to deal with coming to the realization that time has flown by and these things need replacement. I'm wondering regarding painting, are we still able to utilize the chef's department sometime at all?
It hasn't come up. I'd have to check, but not, not recently. We've been looking at, you know, contractors, but it's something I can check on.
Thank you.
And I assume the two vans are not going to be electric vans?
One will likely be electric.
Right, one more electric?
A normal gas van. So what we're going to think about the electric van is to try, you know, we have the small van here to use for small teens to travel. We're going to try one to do one of our daily runs for the special education students. So we're.
And that would be a possibility that in the future, will be more electric vans?
Yes, yeah. We're holding, you know, there's a picture of the technology that we need for mileage on that. Yeah, we're actively trying to get to.
Thank you. The second question, it's a comment. We always give hats off to our custodians. They're wonderful.
Yeah.
And whenever you talk about all that labor in the summer, the heat of the summer, those four guys have to work intensely, like waxing the floors and all that. So just another hats off to them. They're just, we're lucky. We have a great custodians who are all over the.
They're, we're glad you brought that up.
Absolutely. So this will come back for me at our next meeting and then we'll go to town meeting. Thank you. First read on the school handbook. Can I take it?
Sure.
Thanks.
These are pretty straightforward. I met with the elementary principals in May and Sandy. I think you probably tested this. The first change was devices have made their way to the elementary schools and are becoming sort of disruptive and an interruption. So they wanted something in the handbook that says devices will be put away during the school day and that the main office phone is available. The second change was just strengthening the language. The schools were getting bombarded with after 3:00 PM dismissal changes. And it's just, it's chaotic for the main office. And to make sure that students are getting this, you know, importance of what their parents and guardians want. So that was just a change in that language. Under discipline in the elementary handbook, the principals said that the steps are already there for the, you know, restorative practices. The table was put in. I'm not sure, I think it was just a couple of years ago. But I boxed them in a little bit in terms of the approaches that they want to take with different interactions. So the steps are already there. They felt the table wasn't necessary. And I agree, I don't think it is necessary because once you start listing consequences, you can be prohibited from having another possible consequence. So I agree with that. The high school handbook, they were getting a lot of DoorDash food deliveries. And so that was something that was asked. We had already said delivery of flowers and balloons isn't allowed. So they wanted the food deliveries included in there. And then for all handbooks, just some basic changes. Staff names, contact information needs to be updated. Under attendance, we wanted, the elementary principals brought to attention that they wanted something talking about tardy specifically, that, you know, becoming tardy to school can have just as much of a consequence as not coming to school at all. You can miss a significant part of the school day. And then Lori and I talked about, because chronically absent students is an issue and, you know, our school district has a high level of chronically absent students, as do the vast majority of schools across the state, particularly after COVID. We wanted a section in there about the impact of what it means to be chronically absent. And it truly is, under, under state law, the DESI views chronically absent as any absence, even those that are excused and even those that are for disciplinary purposes. So, you know, parents often ask the principals, wait, I had an excuse. You know, I had a note. Why am I getting an attendance letter? It doesn't matter. Excused absences are counted in that absence count. The elementary principals, this is for all the handbooks, but they pointed out, they wanted just an emphasis on having parents and guardians create accounts in Power School. There are many that just don't. And that's a major means of communication with parents, even just looking up your child's academic progress in Power School. And then it's just an update in the food cost information. And then finally, just adding that ride shares aren't allowed, which coincides with the policy that the school committee just approved.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the handbooks? Okay, starting at the last one, transportation services, there's a theme missing editorially for please review the school district's ride share policy. After, for more information, please review the school district's ride share.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Theme missing. And then under attendance, what is the consequence for missing school? You get a letter. Is there some, is there some functional consequence? And should that be listed in here? You know, if you miss a certain number of days, you will not progress to the next grade?
No, it's not really retention. The letters, the letters were very harsh and illegal. We, when we first started, they were like, we're going to file a 51A. We can bring you to court. We can, and we can do those things. And we actually often do. But the letters really, so the handbook doesn't state about our attendance letters explained to families, okay, now you've been absent X amount right now. We'd like to have a meeting then if it continues. Now you've been, your child has been absent X more number of days. We are going to have another meeting, but we may have to file a 51A for, because there is such a thing under abuse and neglect of educators. under abuse and neglect of educational regard. And unless we know, I mean, we're not going to do that if we know that, you know, someone has a chronically ill child at home and they do have excused absences. We will try to work with them, though. Maybe a DuPaul hospital tutoring or something else. So there's a wide array of, there's so many reasons why a child might be absent. So every case has to be dealt with individually. But there are some cases where we might file what's called a child requiring assistance. It used to be the old Jim's petition with the juvenile court. And that is when we sometimes have a parent saying, I can't get them out of bed in the morning. They refuse. I've done everything I can at home to get my child to school. And if a child is willfully refusing to attend school, we get the court involved. It is supportive, even though parents and guardians get, I have to go to court now. It is scary, there's no doubt about it. But it's supposed to be a supportive measure to put other wraparound services in place for a family who can't get the child to school.
Okay. I wondered, because it says students will not suffer consequences from excused absence with this observation. So I just wanted to know whether we should add what the consequence was. I just wanted to know. Oh, similarly with the telephone use, is there a consequence? If they, they get their phone taken away during class, the teacher keeps it, they give it back?
There could be, there could be a lunch detention. There could be, you know, an after-school detention or a parent meeting, parent guardian meeting. It does say that the parents and guardians won't get notified. And I think it's, again, it's case by case. It might even be, please have your child just keep their device at home because, you know, it's not, it's just too disruptive during the school day. And they're not keeping it in their backpack or they're not allowing us to keep it in the main office.
Okay.
Perfect. Yeah, but it doesn't say there's any consequences with firing it correctly. So I'm going to go backward. Can I assume that food costs, if food, if breakfast and lunch is free, then the charge would be if they want two of them?
Yeah, so it's, the cost is when buying additional food items, the last item is there, except for milk, which is free. The cost is always.
They can have as much milk as they want.
Yeah.
Okay. For the attendance, and this is just, the notion of being absent is in the middle of people, kids not being here. And it seems as if that paragraph should be at the end instead of in the middle. I mean, I, it's just a discussion, it's a thing. Everything's about absenteeism. In the middle of it, you see lateness is just as a negative impact. And I was wondering if that's just in the wrong place and it should be put under.
First run, red.
First run?
Yeah. Yeah, just as being absent, you know. And I just was wondering if you should be, instead of being in the middle of absenteeism, the lateness should be in a different place. Minor runner. Two things, the restorative practices. I think, I personally, I'm in favor. But I think, is there a enhancement for teacher training about this? Because that really needs to be really important because teachers are the ones who are supposed to be doing it. And so definitely, is this ongoing professional development?
We started that several years ago.
I'm sorry?
Excuse me. We started the professional development with all staff across the district with Coach Spades several years ago. And then we have been continuing that. And then next year, we actually have some additional trainings and some additional, like tier-two restorative practice trainings that we're going to start to enhance that.
Okay. And one last one, under communication. And you mentioned that this is not being done, the creating an account in Power School, parent guardian. Directions for creating accounts. I guess I wondered about that because I would assume that some parents are having difficulties doing that. And I'm wondering what kind of directions or what kind of assistance is happening?
The directions are actually very clear. And then I know that principal secretaries are constantly reaching out and walking parents and guardians through this process.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Oh, I've got one.
Yeah, go ahead.
One more. I was thinking under attendance, you have, students may not be absent from school for seven or more full-day sessions or 14 half-day sessions within a period of six months. Should you have six in parentheses as well?
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah, good call. All right. Thank you. Any last questions on handbook?
Then one last one.
Yeah.
If a parent gives a name of someone, and I know we have this policy about no ride share. Suppose the name that's given is the Uber driver.
That's okay. And we even said that. It has to be an authorized person, so.
So it can't be Uber driver?
Yes, as long as it's an authorized emergency contact for the student. I think Lori even gave the example. She saw an Uber driver at one of the elementary schools and it was an authorized grandparent who was picking up the grandchild.
So it has to be authorized?
Yes.
It can't just be, you know, John Smith is going to pick up my kid?
Well, it could be. I mean, there's a whole section that parents have to fill out. Emerg, at least three, I think, emergency contacts.
And that's.
So that could be that person. It could be, you know, a neighbor. It doesn't have to be a relative. It could be anybody.
But it would already have to be known?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. This will come back at our next meeting for a group call. Moving on to acting on subcommittee appointments and assignments. Skip them. Please skip. Oh, yes, they did. I'm, sorry. First read on advisory, EBC, emergency plans.
So this is just, we've always had this policy, emergency plans, it was called. And there's a federal law in place in Massachusetts since 2012 that has required school districts to have emergency response plans. Just recently, there was a law passed that wants school districts, requires school districts to have, so let me back up. The emergency response plans that we were previously required to have are just to address medical emergencies. The state has now, is requiring us to have response plans that address both medical and behavioral health emergencies, which makes sense. So the changes to the current policy just align with the new statute. And basically just say, we will have plans in place that address not just medical, but also behavioral health emergencies.
That's it? Any questions about that? All right. Thank you. Now we're moving on to acting on the subcommittee appointments and assignments. As, everyone has a copy of it. As you saw, we are trying to reduce the number of assignments this year. So last year, some people had five and six. Now we're down to almost everyone having three. A couple of people have four. Hopefully that'll make it easier to make it to all of them. Is there a motion to approve the subcommittee assignments?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Terry. Give a second. Thanks. Any comments, questions, discussion?
All right. Well, I just have a concern. Having been on committees when there were two people, sometimes the other person was on a weekly phone. So might there be a backup person or something so that if something came up, um, having only one person?
Yeah, and I, I understand. I mean, I'm hoping that with less assignments, it's going to make it easier for people to make it to all of them. And then we're also going to, this year, take the extra step of having the lead for each assignment reach out to all the members and make sure that the times are set at a, you know, one that is actually doable for everyone. But I think instead of having something formalized, if you know you're not going to make it to something, just reach out to another, you can reach out to me and I'll fill in. Because we're not at the position that we used to be where we would have a forum. So if you're not going to be there, you know, reach out to me or someone else that, you know, might be willing to do it. And we'll try it that way. And if it doesn't work, we'll go back to doing it at a conference.
Yes. Because these meetings go on regardless. I mean, we're just a liaison.
Yes, exactly.
You know, some of them, they have two, well, like the subcommittees, you need a corner.
Right. Yeah. So for the others, we're.
Whether they are or not, go on. And we could read their minutes or whatever.
Yeah. We shouldn't be voting at the meetings on to have voting numbers anyway. So we're really just.
I was particularly looking at the DVI committee because, and maybe I'm a little slower than most people. So it took me a long time to figure out all the moving parts. It took me a few months to be at those meetings. And so for a new person, just to maybe step into that, I thought that was, if we have a priority, I thought that was a good start.
Well, you're certainly welcome to still go. I'm sure. I'm sure Henry would love it.
Kelly, I'd like to be added to student advisory. I was sort of thinking about it when I saw the email come out. And I'd really like to be added to that one. And that one only had two, so that works. That's great. Thanks.
Student advisory. Student advisory. Okay. That was good, because that was the short one. When do we find out when these things happen? Not the subcommittees, excuse me, but the, like, you know, for myself, when do I find out when teach for learning is happening? Is that something that's posted and I just go look for it? We'll make sure that everybody gets the information. It's on my list. I want to have a nice list of when all the meetings are so that other people can attend as well that are going to be meeting in the summer. So I'll think a little bit. Okay. All in favor of approving the subcommittee list with the one edit? Say aye. Oh, wait, we can't. We got a roll call. I'm sorry. It's roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes. Susan?
Margaret? Glenda? Hi.
Yes, hi, yes.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Yes.
And so, yes, the past two vans. Thank you so much. Okay, next up is acting on the school committee calendar. The one that's at the seat has one change. Terry pointed out that we were really short on meetings in the fall because of the holiday scheduling. So we added a meeting on November 5th. We're still on an every other week schedule, though, so hopefully it won't be too much of a burden. And we out our motion to approve their calendar. Thanks, Margaret. A second?
Second.
Thank you. And could I add that this equals the amount of meetings we have this year?
Yes, it's not an additional.
It's not an additional one. Somehow it got lost in cyberspace or something.
When a holiday falls, maybe we need some meetings. So, yeah, thanks for pointing that out and figuring out a way to do it. Roll call, but any last questions? Terry?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Katrina? Margaret? Thank you. Glenda?
Yes.
Next up, update on the budget.
Paul? I'll be real quick, I promise.
I know, we want to meet the chef.
Just put the same position where we're in hospital. We're in very good shape going into the end of this year. One big note that you see in the volume, non-salaries, net negative $300,000. That's before the transfers we're making this month to special education reserve fund. The added to the circuit record cap. So that's another, some more positive than it is right now. But the July 9th meeting will be going over year results. So I really, I think, given so many moving parts that take place in June at the end of the year, that's a more useful.
Good job. July 9th will be a more useful conversation?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But we're in good shape.
Great. Thank you. Lori, super content update.
All right. I have a list, but I'm going to try to go through quickly because I do want to make sure we introduce the chef. So bear with me. I just want to start, just to mention, graduation was just so beautiful. And it was the 50th year our students wore white stones that had the 1974 to the 2024 dates since they were the 50th class at Falmouth High School. And members of the 1974 class, the first class at Falmouth High School, were in attendance, quite a few of them, and really enjoyed the ceremony. So it was a special event. The wounded warriors that we, every year, I just wanted to mention that the admin team was at the start as we have many years past. And then we have all along the Shining Sea Bike Path, students from our schools that line up and cheer and wave. And then, as always, our elementary students make hearts for all of our that are there. So it's a really nice event. We had our Mac, SAT, and family forum. The bright spots and area improvements were shared in five different areas. And the participants, through a series of activities, the participants actually made recommendations of where they think that we should begin next year. Just so that we are continuing to make sense that all of our kids belong. Composting, I know a topic a lot this year. We did get up to all seven schools up and running. So we're very excited about that. And we'll be hitting the school year next year running, again, at full capacity. All the field days were very successful. I mean, lots of fun. Students participated in lots of games and a couple of schools even had adult inflatable races.
Oh, my gosh. They were so funny.
They were. The kids just loved it. Sorry. CTE, as I've mentioned several times, that we've started the two new programs, the medical assisting and aviation mechanical technology. We have six students sign up for each program to start next year. So we're very excited for a brand-new program and students interested. So we're happy about that. Juneteenth, the school celebration, once again, happened during the Arts Alive event. It was on a Saturday. It was June 15th this year. But large students participated in the celebration and we had the lockupala group at stake. So very nice. Special Olympics, unfortunately, in the Capewide. Special Olympics was ranked out. And I just have to say, our amazing CEPa, Melissa Verrera, and PE teacher Susan Fishback at North Falmouth pulled together a Special Olympics here district-wide at North Falmouth, the field in the back.
And it was just a beautiful day and lots of fun activities for the students. And so, we didn't miss out on it. And it really, hats off to both of them for putting together. And lots of other people across the district jumping in and helping out. So that was really nice. Sandy, you want to give a real brief update on where we are on the Capeford trip?
Sure. So Henry and I had an opportunity to visit Bridgewater State yesterday and meet with, there are 10 people studying from Capeford, the Pedro Pierce Institute, which is the Institute of Bridgewater. So we went and met with them, which is helping us also impart shape our experience. We've also recently had a planning meeting with Zita Vieira, who's our contact, the director of our sister school in Calibur. And so, we've begun to develop our itinerary, which is gonna include some professional development and exchanging practices with each other, visiting and working with the students. And then, running through abbreviated mock itinerary for what students would be able to do on a separate trip in the future, really acclimating us to the country, to the culture, and then also experiencing the university and the dorms and things where the students have a chance to stay. And working on building out the people that we're gonna be visiting. So we're working through the itinerary and at the same time, also working to book our, our travel. So fortunate to be building a team to go with Terry and Margaret, Henry, myself, Ellen Dewitt from FEF, representing the FEF boards. And we have four teachers, all who have been working with their.
They didn't know they were both.
They were too.
I'm really surprised, so I don't know. You didn't know they didn't know, but I wasn't surprised.
I didn't know. We didn't know.
I didn't know.
I got an email from Henry asking me about the dates. So that's, I did know, because Henry sent me an email. Would I be, if you checked your email, I'm sure it said two months ago. You went. Like, this afternoon, just before I dug you. Henry, okay.
I'm so excited.
I hope he did.
So, will be joined. Also, the four teachers whose classes have been interacting. And then, also Rebecca Vieira, as our principal represented. So we have a team that's coming together. And yes, Henry's working to try and make sure everybody is conflict-free on those dates because Bridgewater is being our liaison to putting all our travel arrangements and accommodations together so that it's one systematic piece instead of us trying to manage all the different moving parts. And then, maybe, maybe we'll ask Paul to drop us off and we'll like. But it's, it's taking shape and so all the, all the parts are happening. And hopefully, we'll have more concrete itinerary to share soon enough.
Awesome.
Thank you. And I want to talk about a very special person that has, for many years, created projects with students around autism awareness. And so, Corinne Minshell, she was a parent for many years at T-Ticket. And the last two years, she's been, she's a parent at Morse Pond. I want to share. So this is the T-Ticket project this year. I'm gonna let Sandy, you want to share a little instance?
Sure, so this is currently in the, the front lobby. So Corinne has spent hours upon hours for the past six-plus years helping all of the students and staff create a group project. And it's always a surprise. So she kind of gives us a little details about what everybody's going to do. And then, at the end, you know, she displays the culmination of the effort. So it's really hard to see, but on the left, those are little clothespin dolls. So she provided all of the staff and students with all of the materials, so you could have your unique doll. So the, the purpose of the activity is to highlight everyone's uniqueness and celebrate individuality. And so, everybody get to create their own doll and choose the, the fabric or material to make the clothing and some yarn for the hair. And then, you could add little accouments if you wanted to, things that were special about you. And then, on the right side are the ribbons. And on the ribbons, she had asked everyone to write something that's special about yourself or a positive attribute that you have, and then, something that you admire about people that are neurodiverse, something special about them. So, so it's pretty, it's pretty special and it's really, it's been a great opportunity for the students to really focus on the individuality and celebrate differences.
Also, so this is the one, these are all ribbons. Similar type of activity, working with the students, reading a book at Morse Pond and in talking about the, the individual differences. And so, these are ribbons that the students created to, to make this project. So, so, you know, it really, it really is. So just, again, we're so, so happy that, that Corinne continues to do this each year. And I passed out a article that Sarah Murphy wrote about this, the project, so that you have that as well. All right, and just a couple more things, if you hang in here with me. So I want to talk about our Clipper Connections. So this is a beautiful project. As I'm talking, I'm gonna pass this around, I'll start with Melissa here, and you can look through it. So the Clipper Connections, there are 15 students at Lawrence and 15 students at Mullen Hall. And all are part of the ELD program. And they have, the Lawrence students have walked in Mullen Hall, Mullen Hall students have walked to Lawrence. They have worked on several projects like bird feeders, a number of things throughout the year. They had lunch together. So just, just really making those connections that we talked about are so important. And then, this project about the Clipper, as you'll see, they together learn about what the C means, the L means, the I, and so forth throughout the Clipper, and created their pictures. When you see around the R, it was the sidewalk chalk. And so, it's just a beautiful book that I just want to share with you, but it's about the connections and students. Just one little note about the, the student from Lawrence that did the front cover. We were having trouble having, getting the student to, to school, multiple absences. And through this project, she started coming to school more and was so proud to be able to do that cover. So we really tried all kind of ways to try to connect with students and find ways to engage them in school.
We'll keep it after.
And then, sadly, school year does come to an end and we had to send our students home, although they were wearing a lot of smiles as they were getting on those buses. But very sad for all of us that were out waiting, waiting the students goodbye. So, so, end of another school year.
Any questions from work?
I was thinking about graduation and I don't want to keep everyone, because I know that we have a very important, exciting opportunity to happen, just a commencement. But as a healthcare professional, I recognize that graduation was painfully hot for some folks. And I actually had asked if there was going to be a tent or something. So since then, I've sort of been thinking, it's not fair to just, you know, recognize that it was super hot for some folks and some folks didn't do very well. So how, what's the, what's my thought for a solution? So we can't very well cover the entire field. And I don't think that that's the intent when we made the agreement to go outside. But I was thinking, if Rome could cover the Colosseum, how, what can we do today? And I think a lot of people, including ourselves, personally, at our house, we have a sale off our, the back of our house. So perhaps we could look into some sort of sale over the bleachers or at least a section. Just, I'm thinking about it because you mentioned graduation and it's still fresh in my mind, obviously plenty of time. But just always looking to how we can make it so all of our families can come. Or at least make it a little more easier.
Thank you. Any last questions? All right, we'll move on to routine business. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 28, 2024? I'll make a motion. Melissa's got that one, and that's her second.
Thank you.
Any editor? Can you just? Great, roll call, Terry?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Sutrina?
Yes.
Margaret? Did you say yes? Glenda?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes, I'm also a yes. That's what you were gonna say, thank you so much.
Committee reports? Margaret?
Committee reports, wellness committee, that on June 6th. And we did the evaluation of flyer and finalized it. What I think was really interesting was the year before, all of the three levels of wellness were separated and never integrated. And it really was integrated this year in the flyer. And we have the flyer stored on the web, webpage. Brett? Margaret?
The, yes, we are, that's our.
The prime, summer project this year, I have that up and running.
The opening paragraph is what we stand for. And then, we'll be including policies, procedure documents, and flyers. Learning access report is gonna be a little bit longer. Learning access, because it is sort of welcome center, what they've done is begun to put protocols in place for the welcome centers so that that would happen. And one of the things is the IC cards, which we can pass around so people can see. Let's see, multilingual Clippers, IC. A list of who to contact, this one provided a list of who to contact in the community and the district. There's gonna be a welcome protocol. People will get an email at the beginning of the year. They'll also, we're also gonna focus on students who are at level or advanced level because sometimes, I think publicly, and it's very important to spend a lot of time talking with especially these students, making sure everyone has access. But I think sometimes family is a little concerned about, but my child is advanced in what you're doing for him. So that's an important part of it. Email will be going out at the beginning of the school year. Accelerated learning for students. Professional development, yeah, there's professional development for, every year, teachers have to have to renew their license. It's paid for by Title III, Christine's developing it directly. It includes equity diversion in the wellness protocol. Okay, the committee will no longer exist. And the material from the committee will be moved in part to ALPAP, the Equity Audit, and to professional development for teachers. And obviously, the EDI. That's accurate, perfect?
It's a lot.
I'm trying to, I tried to rush them, but I would not. I know there's something very important that's gonna happen.
Thank you. Is it Sue or Terry? Who had a committee report? Terry?
Mine is really a committee report, it's just, I just want to take a moment of remembrance for Deborah Warner, who passed away two weeks ago. She was at least 25 years at the high school in different settings. One of them was in the student activities. And she touched so many students. And Falmouth was lucky to have her as an employee. And many of us here were lucky to have her as a friend. So just to mention her name in remembrance.
Thank you, Terry.
I have a little update on a GCH, Debbie, I suppose.
Unless you were.
I'd much rather you do.
Okay.
We negotiations met again yesterday. Things seem to be going on track, rather smoothly. And I guess that's all I can speak to now.
I know.
Great.
That's all you can say. Good meeting. Yeah, it was great. Thank you. And request for information? All right, great. Meet the chef! Yay!
I am so excited that we've come to this moment. We have hired a wonderful chef. So Chef Laura Higgins-Falson.
Hello, everyone. You can sit at the chair here.
Thank you for being here today. So I, I could kind of run down lots of things that I know about you, but that'd be lovely to hear from you. Like, how about yourself?
Yes, so I'm from Falmouth. I graduated in 2004. And actually, just to touch you on Ms. Warner, I ate lunch in her office every day when I was in the high school. But yes, so I have been in food circus my whole life. Started at Mooncase Cafe when I was of working age. And continued to find my way to kitchens and to move out to California to go to the Culinary Institute of America after graduating from Bridgewater State College with Operations Management degree. So that I graduated from the Culinary Institute of America in Napa Valley, California in 2011. And continued my studies in the kitchens, traveling globally. Went to South Africa, Spain, France. And also stayed a while in California in that part of the farmland, farm-to-table Alice Waters movement. And then, also had opportunity to go to Chicago and work as a sous chef in a kitchen there with the, like, grit of the city. So that was a really cool opportunity. And always knowing that I wanted to come back to Falmouth and bring my knowledge and enrich the community with this love of food that I've had. And when I read this article about the chef opportunity, I was like melting. I think it's something that called to me and it's everything I've ever done. I felt like it came to this, like, crux, or, you know, to this culmination of, like, how I could come back to my community and impact it in such an amazing and, like, powerful way. And I have a daughter who's in an A and B in third grade at Eastham Elementary. So I have this, like, all seeing eye, I have, you know, the students telling me what food is good and what's bad. And I have the parents telling me friends. And then, I also work currently at Kudus Farm as the, at the Buffalo joke, so I'm the chef owner there. I run the Jamaican nights now with the help of Raymond, who's been there for years. And I've worked alongside his wife, Elaine, in the kitchen. So I've gotten those recipes under my wing and we start, we kick that off tomorrow, actually. Yes. And then, we also do catering events and I do lunch service as well. So I'm very excited to take all my knowledge and slowly integrate it into the food service in the Falmouth public schools and get to know all of the staff. I had the opportunity last week to go into all seven school kitchens and meet everyone. And I, I feel like I'm looking at myself. I know that's like, but I'm a cook. I don't like to say, like, I'm a chef or anything. Like, I'm in there and I'm, food is like my language. I've said this before, like, it's how I, this is not my way that I talk to people. I talk to people through food. And I can see that, you know, those women and that men, like, they, that's what they do and that's what their love of. And that's how it translates. And I'm excited to be able to work and collaborate with them to, like, enrich the food experience for students and, like, also create a good foundation in nutrition for them to go into the classroom and be able to learn better and excel. And also, from the parent perspective to, and I started thinking about this. I'm like, yes, it's amazing that we'll have this opportunity to give the kids. But then, knowing as a parent, the stress that it can be to make school lunch every morning and figure that out for the week on, you know, Sunday or Saturday, that, all right, we made a shop. If we can create that, like, positive net wave of energy in the households and affects, like, that many families, that's really exciting and, like, an amazing thought. So I'm very excited.
Very excited too.
Excited, anybody more this goes, questions for that?
No, it's not, the best part is a Falmouth kid coming back. I really, Falmouth, love it. Love it, love it, Falmouth.
Yeah, I'm very excited. And I do have some snacks outside for everyone to enjoy.
Yes, we're excited for you to speak to us in your, in your language.
Over some, some conversation. So with that, we're gonna recess and we will not be coming back to open meeting because we're gonna move directly to open and executive session after that. So I guess we sign off. We don't usually recess, it's unusual. No, not anything. We're gonna move into executive, we'll finish the recess and then we'll move into executive session.